All right, we'll call this public caucus to order. Tonight, we have Chief John Judge, who's here to talk about the SAFER grant. So Chief, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me here again. I know that we spoke about this during the budget cycle. And there's still an opportunity through FEMA to move forward with this grant if Council has an appetite to do so. So we wanted to make sure, because there was a lot of information last time we were here on the budget and other things that I don't think we were able to provide a proper amount of information to you regarding the SAFER grant and, you know, just some of the concerns that Council had and also, you know, just to be able to answer some questions and look at this SAFER grant through FEMA as a singular issue rather than encompassed in the budget as well. So I've provided you, most of you have had the documentation before. I did some, we did a little bit more inclusion. It's in a packet that's at your desk. I provided Councilman Schuster with a copy of the actual grant, and I could forward that to Mr. Waldenberg if you would like to see the actual grant application that was submitted last year, but I think that was forwarded, but we can re-forward any of those documents as well. So I just put it on the first page, it's kind of just a, a kind of table of contents of what's in the packet. It's the, it's our organizational flow chart, just as a department. I know one of the things that was asked for were some of the retirements that have happened. So if you turn to the second page, there's a spreadsheet of retirements that have happened over the last, since 2014 in the fire department, and we tracked them. And historically, they average around five to seven per year, some years more than others. And if you look even last year, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 in 2021, which was a little bit bigger of a year. And that typically happens in a contract year anyway. At the end of a contract, that's usually, you'll see retirements bump up a little bit more. We have one pending that's already put their paperwork in for this year and three more anticipated retirements that are going to happen this year that we know of already. And typically, our retirements usually occur in the beginning of the year or towards the end of the year. I do have another spreadsheet that I'll forward to you, and it's a list of people, and I think that was forwarded previously, of the number of people in the fire department that are currently eligible for retirement as of today, that have both their time and years of service, and then also through the grant cycle, how many more will be in that? And I know I met with several of Council independently of this on other issues, and we spoke briefly about SAFER in those discussions. Mr. Schuster, Mr. McCandrew, Dr. Rothschild, we've had those discussions, and I'm providing just some information there. So some of this might be a rehash to some degree. One of the things that I think that I keep kind of hearing regarding it has been, you know, the legacy costs and also the history of SAFER in the city of Scranton. And on that third page, we have pretty much just the timeline of how the SAFER has gone. Let me be clear that since the city has, all the SAFER grants the city has been awarded over years, there was never a layoff after those. The first layoffs that I remember in my career happened in 2011. It was in August of 2011 where I think we had eight members that were laid off. And then at the end of that year, December 31st, there were another 22 additional members who were laid off, which took our numbers. They had been attrited from 2008 when we were at 150 people, all the way down to about one, I think it was about 130. And then those July and January layoffs took us down to 100, which resulted in the closure, permanent closure of Engine 15, which was up on Ash Street, and Engine 9, which is on Main Avenue in the 1,000 block of Main Avenue. When they made those 30 layoffs, it also resulted in what they called at the time under the previous administration were rolling brownouts depending on staffing. They would brown out different companies. Engine 10 on East Mountain was browned out quite often because of staffing, because we were down to 100 members in the department. At that time, I was actually, my first day as a union president was January 1st, 2012, right in that timeframe. And I approached the mayor at the time and asked him if we can put in for a SAFER grant. I said to get those people back, and he said yes. And we told him we were going to put in for 50, which would have been the 30 laid-off positions and the 20 that had been attrited since 2008. So we put in for that grant, and you could kind of see the timeline there. Started a grant writing committee. We put it together, submitted the grant for 50 positions. In March of 2012, shortly before we were awarded that grant, there was a fire on West, or excuse me, on East Mountain. It was a close call. It took 12 minutes, 10 to 12 minutes for our first apparatus to arrive and two occupants of that structure almost perished. We were able to get them out before any injury or harm came to them. And at the time, the administration called the next day and said, I think we need to bring some people back. So we brought 12 back, I believe it was 12. And then shortly after that, FEMA announced that we were awarded $8.3 million for 50 positions, the 30 that had been laid off and the 20 attrited positions. The mayor at the time kind of changed his mind and didn't want to move forward with hiring the laid off, or excuse me, the attrited positions. We ended up sending a little over $3 million back to FEMA and only took the money to hire back those 30 laid-off positions. So that was the last layoff. So March of, or excuse me, June of 2012, it was $8.2 million we got. We ended up sending back 3.1, brought back all those 30 positions. In 2013 through 2015, we started to drop again, and there were rolling brownouts of Truck 4, which is on Main Avenue. They had already permanently closed the engine that was housed on Main Avenue, and they started to roll, do rolling brownouts of Truck 4. So there was no coverage over in that section of the city. We put together another grant application for 15 positions. The request was based on positions that'd bring us closer to the NFPA 1710 compliance standard, which was what the fire service is based off of for response. And we were awarded $2.4 million. We received those positions, and we've remained since there in the level of, excuse me, in the level of 130 to 140 positions since that time. It's fluctuated depending on retirements, depending on budgets. In March of '21, the SAFER grant opened again. And the reason that we put in for it this time was a number of different reasons, to get more compliant with NFPA 1710. And what we were also seeing at that time was significant personnel outages due to COVID. If you recall, we were just, I know everybody remembers it, and we're still kind of dealing with it at some point as well. We had a number of our staff out due to COVID reasons. We put in for that grant to help us weather the storm. The FEMA administrator at the time, he's the only one who can get rid of the, any requirements with the SAFER grant. One of them was a retention requirement, and one of them was a cost share requirement. For the 2020 grant cycle, which is the one we applied for, there is no retention requirement, and there is no cost share with that. It's fully paid for, for, for the number of members that you put in for, healthcare benefits, all ancillary benefits, and wages. So we did our application, submitted that in August, notified that we were, excuse me, September, I think it was, that we were actually got the official notification that we were successful in that grant application. And then from there, we moved forward with some of the documentation that led to the budget and the discussions that we would, we had. You have an award letter. This is just the award letter from FEMA, which is on August 31st for that grant of $2.596 million. And then the next page that stapled together is just the cost breakdowns we did when we were actually doing the numbers to provide to the, to FEMA when we did the SAFER grant application. Also provided you FEMA's facts, frequently asked questions, FAQs, from FEMA on the SAFER 2020. And then the one that I prepared for you, I believe it was last year around budget time, on the grant information for frequently asked questions that we thought were more specific to here in the city of Scranton, just because we were hearing some narrative of some different things, about how many positions it funds, is there a fund match, is there a retention requirement, how many grant applications have we submitted in the past? So that kind of gives you a breakdown of those, those questions there as well. And then I, the mayor had asked for me to do how this would impact as far as our budget and savings that it would possibly bear to, have fruit to bear. And I put together, if we add those 10 positions using a proper numerical value based on vacations and holidays, how much that would have saved over a one-year period for, if we had had those positions. And what that was done for was the kind of, we could probably extrapolate that same data moving forward on what the savings would be in overtime costs alone. So from December, or excuse me, October 12th, 2020 through October 11th of 2021, we anticipated had we had those 10 positions during that time, it would have saved $537,000. So if you put that over three years, that could be close to $1.5 million in savings in overtime budget. And as you know, because of some of the staffing issues we've had relative to how the academies are run and also COVID impact over that timeline, you know, we can anticipate safely that we would probably be able to save close to that $1.5 million. But I would definitely say over that three years, it would be over a million. And you've seen the budget numbers from last year from the controller on what our overtime was for the year. And then the next thing you have is the legislative cover sheet that initially came up to you when we sent that legislation up last year. And then there's two memos from myself to Mayor Cognetti, one on September 21st and one on October 21st outlining some of the details that we've kind of just covered, but with a little bit more specifics as far as the financing piece goes. The other thing that I have been asked about has been the legacy costs, and those were kind of outlined in the 2021 memos to the mayor as well on what it would potentially cost as far as legacy if at the end of this grant period, we would need to lay off or trip back down to our current levels. If that's the case, believe in that packet, it's about $152,000, $152,000 if you needed to, if we needed to lay off all 10 of those positions. But we would immediately have a bench that we're able to recall from. So as people leave, we would be able to immediately call them. They'd already be trained. They would just have automatic right of recall per the civil service rules and regulations. We'd be able to bring them back. So if somebody per se left in March, the problem with them leaving in March is I can't hire anybody till end of August to send them to the academy. They don't finish the academy till around Thanksgiving, and then they have a training period that they're pretty much not affecting our staffing levels until sometime mid-December. So somebody who leaves in February or March, it could be nine months. With this potential pool of candidates, they would have automatic right of recall and be able to be put right back in and affect the staffing levels immediately. I think that's pretty much all I have. And I think one of the reasons that I'm bringing this back up to you guys again is there is a, there is a window of opportunity to still accept this grant. And I think the mayor's of the opinion she wants this to be something that Council is good with as well as her before she even moves forward with putting that legislation up here. So we wanted to give an opportunity for you, for Council to ask questions specifically that maybe can clarify a little bit more than we were able to do in December so that we can make an informed decision, a correct informed decision on whether or not to move forward with this. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that in January of this year, I was at a Pennsylvania Chiefs, Pennsylvania Career Chiefs Conference in Wilkes-Barre, where the section chief for FEMA was there to talk about SAFER Grant. She's the section chief for FEMA who oversees the SAFER Grant and the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. And the reason she was invited to that meeting is the Pennsylvania Career Chiefs were up in arms over the funding levels that were funded in the 2020 grant. So just in Pennsylvania alone, there were 71 grants from career and combination departments like the city of Scranton. Any career staffing had put in SAFER grant applications. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania received one grant out of the $440 million that was allocated in that grant cycle. The only successful department to put in that grant that year was the city of Scranton for $2.56 million. We were the only successful grant. The way that these grants are scored is there is a scoring mechanism that's electronic first, and then they do a peer review based on the narratives, and then it goes to FEMA staff for awarding, and it's a numerical based. And that's how they roll the grants out. The higher, higher number you are, until they get all the way down and get all that allocated funding out to the departments, that's when they stop awarding grants. And we were high enough to score. None of the other 70 departments in the Commonwealth were able to score high enough to be awarded the grant under SAFER in 2020. We were the only department.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, um, how does, okay, so now the grant, once, say, we accept it, we vote on it, it starts three years at that point, or we're already a year into it?
No, it would start, it would start now.
So the, so the clock, the three-year clock would start upon legislation, approved legislation?
Once we hired, yeah, once the legislation.
Right, so once you have the 10.
Yep.
And then when you said that like, okay, there's, there's no retention requirements, meaning at the end of the three years, correct?
Correct.
So along that way, these, I don't want to call them bodies, these trained professionals or firefighters can be used for, through attrition, positions that retire along the way, correct?
They will fill into those positions, and we will have to maintain that number
And then you gotta bring three, say, okay, so three, three retire, and then you bring three more into the SAFER grant program.
Correct.
So at the, so, but at, over the course of the next three years, is there 30 people or 30 firefighters eligible to retire?
I think as we stand right now, we have 25, I believe right now, I could check those numbers, 20 to 25 that have time and age. And I did the numbers all the way out to the end of the grant cycle, because as the days go by, obviously, there's more that are eligible for retirement. And I've done those numbers. I think I sent it before, but I'll gladly print it and send it again to all of you.
But say, so at the, at the third year, if there's seven, seven out of the 10 will just be put in?
Correct, and you wouldn't have to rehire.
And the other three will just be in the wait, waiting?
Correct.
For recall. So it's not like we're going to carry 10, you know?
Past the grant.
Right.
Past the grant period of performance.
Right, so we're not going to be stuck with 10, you know, salaries?
No.
That's, that's how it kind of looked the first time around.
But no, no, but I need to clarify that too. So right now, we have, how many firefighters do we have right now?
There's 139 in our department budgeted.
There's 139, and that's, does that include yourself and the mechanic?
That includes myself.
Includes yourself?
And the mechanic's in there, yes.
Okay, and the mechanic brings it to 140, I believe.
No, the mechanic's in the, in the bargaining unit. So there's a 100 and, there's 140 in our budget. That includes all the fire department personnel, includes myself, and includes my payroll clerk.
Yes.
And then our master mechanic, that includes him, but it does not include the clerical mechanic that's assigned to work on fire department vehicles.
So there's what, 137 active?
138.
138 active firefighters.
Correct.
How many active firefighters do we have right now?
138. The ones that are in the academy.
So take away the ones that are in the academy.
132.
So we're at 132 in this?
130, I'm sorry.
130, and there's eight at the academy?
Excuse me?
Is there eight at the academy currently?
There's eight at the academy right now.
Okay. So just saying that, you know, you have to get from, you know, counting those eight, say we accept this grant, then we have to go to 148, correct?
Correct.
For, and we have to keep that level for three years?
Fully funded for three years.
So if there's 25, say, eligible to retire right now, you know, say 20 of them go in the next three years, we still have to keep that 148 number?
You gotta keep that 148 through the whole period of performance. Once the period of performance has ended, you no longer have to retain them. And FEMA in the past has had retention requirements under SAFER where the city would take the grant and have to agree to hold, pay those positions for an extra year or two, that retention requirement no longer exists.
Okay.
But if 10 retire in the last year, then 10 would be, would just transition over?
Correct.
And then, so I'm looking at the history of the SAFER grant, right? So, you know, my understanding based on the information I heard last time is, you know, we don't always get it, but we kind of get it all the time. So, you know, three years, like I said, months passed, three years could become not six years and become nine years with the SAFER grants we reallocated.
Correct, we can reapply it the, when we're getting close to the end of this grant and reapply for another SAFER grant. We've been successful in the past.
And how receptive would you think it would be if we, if this is sent back, and our chances of getting it again?
I would think that FEMA is still going to just do the scoring, but it's always a concern, right? There's a human element involved, but they, they do peer reviews. I mean, we have sent back money before. We sent back 3.1 million in 2000. But we did get a gig on that because right after we sent that back, the following year, they attempted to do another SAFER grant, and FEMA said, you sent us 3.1 million back last year, we're not going to give it to you this year. So that was the only time we were unsuccessful, when we tried to get another one right off a piggyback of the 8.3 million we were given and turned around and sent back 3.1.
I have a question. What, what is the recommended staffing levels as noted in the NF?
Mike?
Okay. So I'm just wondering what the recommended staffing levels are in the NFPA 1710?
So recommended staffing levels under 1710, that's a standard from the National Fire Protection Association, which talks about response times and staffing levels to different type of dwelling fires with timelines for career departments. So the, the standard is to have four on everything. We run three on everything, and when we are staffed with additional members because of low vacation or holidays on a certain day, we will be some of those pieces staffed with four. This will give us the ability to staff more of those pieces with four personnel a higher percentage of the time, which gets us closer to the compliance level with NFPA 1710. They break it down into never, rarely, sometimes, mostly, and always, I think, in a grant. And I think we said, based on our numbers, we're probably going to get somewhere close to mostly or always.
With these 10 positions?
Correct. We put an additional three on each shift.
Okay. So let's say that after the three years, three people need to be laid off. Are we required to pay unemployment for those three?
Yes, and I did the numbers on what the unemployment cost would cost at this time if you had to lay off all 10 of them. And under the Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Act, it'd be $152,000 in total to lay all 10 of those off. Meanwhile, in their first three months out of the academy, I anticipate the savings and overtime costs will be much more than that.
I had a question on the overtime costs, because I know you use that as a justification that this money would have been, would have been helpful, especially over the pandemic where those costs were increased. So I'm wondering what they are now compared to over the pandemic, if, if you know, like, what percentage of a drop you've had in those, like, if you still feel like this would
We did see a spike in costs in, in December with the COVID spike, because we had some members off. But we're also running around 93% of completely vaccinated or up-to-date vaccinated in our, in our department, close to 91 to 93%. So I think that that has helped as well. And we put some other mitigation techniques and, and policies in place which reduced that number. But the previous year, we did see a significant spike when we had the initial outbreak in 2020 into 2021. But our costs in December were up a little bit as far as overtime goes, as far as the year goes, I think we're budgetarily on track right now.
What are the highest staffing levels you've, you've had over the last, say, 10 years?
So in 2008 was our highest staffing level. We were at 2,000, or we were at 150 in 2008. And it hasn't traded down with layoffs and attritions all the way down to 100. We were at 100 from January of 2012 until we were able to receive that grant to bring back those laid-off positions.
And is there a contractual number that, like a minimum?
There is not.
No.
So you said that we have sent money back in the past, so this, this could be an option if we chose to send money back. What would be the, the reason that we would do that? We would use?
If we denied, if, if we don't move forward with the grant?
Well, not the current money. You said in 2000, was it 2012, you sent three, three million in some change back?
Initially awarded it, the mayor at the time did not take the 8.3. When they accepted the grant, they sent back to FEMA an amendment and said, we will only take the 5 million to bring back the laid-off positions. So they never got that number.
So initially, they never took the whole amount?
Correct.
Gotcha.
We wouldn't send that money back, like, and if you look at the two spreadsheets with the healthcare costs and the salary costs, typically newer members don't have high healthcare costs, and because of the way the insurance is in the city of Scranton, this is, these are estimates. We don't pay a policy, like high policy amount for that coverage. So what would happen, and this is what's been done typically in the past, is even though the grant period of performance is three years, we have our projected healthcare costs in there. If we don't use that amount of healthcare for those members, FEMA has allowed grant amendments to push the wages out even further. So this can actually, and that has happened here in the city of Scranton, where we've got additional months of funding for the salary because we didn't use the healthcare portion of that. And that was just done through amendment, through the administrator for the grant.
Yeah, and that would likely just only be a few months, right?
Well, grants in the past were only like two, two years. This is a three-year for 10. So it, depending on what those healthcare costs, I anticipate it could probably push it three to six months, an additional three to six months.
I've been getting some conflicting evidence, or not conflicting information here and there. One was about the cost of the academy. So we are paying for the academy and likely, I mean, if we're seeing the retirements, we're seeing, so to start off, it would, it's, right now, we're, there's 25 that will be eligible over the three-year period, correct?
More than that.
Okay.
There's 25, I think, that are eligible today.
So with that, would you say it's more than likely that we're going to probably put more than 10? Initially, we're going to get 10, but there's a, there's a chance that we're going to be putting more than 10 individuals through the SAFER grant, correct?
Yeah.
So with, with that said, we have, it's an $8,000 cost per, per, per position for the academy plus the, the 4,000 in protective equipment. So it's a, it's a total of about $128,000 for equipment and, and academy. It would probably be a little bit more than that. With that equipment, can we retain that equipment, or that's personal equipment that would be for that individual, it's?
No, we retain that, we reissue that equipment.
Okay.
As long as it stays in compliance with the, the standard for, for that equipment, it's 10 years, but we, we reissue that equipment when we have retirees all the time.
Okay, so if possible, we'd probably reissue some of it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. In 2015, we did get the grant in 2015, so coming off of the end of that, was it, was it a two-year in 2015?
I believe the 2012 grant was a two-year.
Okay. Coming off the 2015 grant, how many positions did that, did that fund in 2015?
I believe it was, it might be in there, I believe it was 15 or 12. 15 positions.
Okay. So coming off that 2015 grant, how many of those employees were used when attrition occurred?
We can't, we stayed at that staffing level, level at that point. We were at 120 or 125, and we've stayed it since that, we absorbed those in to get us back up to that level where we're not doing. us back up to that level where we're not doing rolling brownouts.
Yeah, so where I was going with that was how many, that were not in the, in 2015, how many positions that weren't in the budget were retained? Do you know that number offhand?
All of them.
So, some sort of attrition would have happened over those two years, though?
We were at 125, I believe, when they put that grant in, and they got a grant for 15, so I think we just stayed at that same number right around. We've, we have floated in that same number between 135 and our current 140 in the department since then.
Okay. I'm trying to look, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to look and see what this grant is going to look like at the end of, of three years, if it looks?
Yeah.
Similar.
Just, um, so just to add on to that point, do you know what the financial impact is of 10 additional firefighters in year four if we weren't to receive a new grant and we weren't to furlough?
I can give that.
What's, what's the additional?
It's going to be about 10% more than the cost that you see in the spreadsheet for year three.
So, that's at what, 987, I believe?
That's.
Or 984 in the third year? So, that would be, it'd be over, it'd be over a million dollars additional?
With healthcare benefits and pension costs.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I have a quick one. So, what we've pretty much stated is, if we send the $2.6 million grant back, we're losing 1.5 million in overtime savings.
I believe so. And the one thing that I know we haven't really touched on is the safety of the members working under a, that guideline of that NFPA 1710. So, one of the things that's very difficult to quantify is going to be the savings in injury costs, workers' comp costs because of the safer staffing level. I mean, if you look at the acronym, it's SAFER, right? So, it's not just safer for the community, it's safer for the firefighters that are working on that apparatus as well. So, there are costs in there that are very difficult for us to quantify over that three years.
Has there been any analysis done in terms of the long-term implications in terms of legacy cost on adding an additional 10 and then keeping that staffing level then moving forward?
No, because I think that that would be a decision that between the administration and council would have to make if they had, you know, the appetite to keep that and what the funding was, or what the budget looked like for the city of Scranton. I think that would be a conversation that we would have at that point. But we haven't done those, those long-term costs, and we haven't done those with the other three grants as well. This is something that, I'm, and originally, when I came in here in December or November, I wasn't looking at the COVID implications as much, but as we have seen those spikes in COVID numbers, that has definitely impacted our department, police department as well. So, even, I don't think anybody here would be willing to stand up and say that we've seen the last of COVID. And my fear is that if we do have another spike in that, and that's what the medical experts, I know at least the ones that we're doing on bi-weekly conference calls are saying there may be another variant coming, this can help us weather those storms at least too until hopefully we're out of COVID in totality is the hope.
Then, that, if I could just ask, that 1.5 million in savings over three years, that's, that's an estimate, right? There's no guarantee that that's going to happen, right?
No.
That people aren't going to call off or get sick or what, what have you right here?
Correct. I, I took a historical look at what our department was over the previous year to put those numbers together and look and see what our outages are. And we track our sick leave and look at the spikes, if we have spikes, and it pretty much remains kind of consistent. But, yeah, it's, it's only an estimate and a projection, but I, I feel that it's safe to say that there's probably a million dollars at least in savings there.
Thank you.
Over that three-year period.
And these, I mean, these numbers in terms of first year, second year, third year, they're based off, those, their estimates based off the current contract, too, right? That we're operating under now?
Correct.
So, they could potentially even go up?
Correct.
With, you know?
We'd always be able to put an amendment in to possibly shorten that go list, and contractually, the salary costs have changed. We can only do this for two years, 10 months now because of salary increases. So, we can always put those amendments in, and it's up to the FEMA administrator whether to grant that or not, but they're pretty, their understanding of the financial burden and impact that this could potentially have, and I think that that's why they have eliminated those restrictions that have been at previous grants as well.
I have a quick question. So, okay, this grant, when it, it's awarded, it is awarded, it's accepted, it's for three years. When, when you start the process?
Mike.
Sorry. So, it's three years, during the course of the three years, when or when is it required to start seeking another grant? Two years out, one year out of the third year?
We'd probably start writing that grant in the last year of it, because it typically opens in the beginning of the year and closes in February or March, and then they start awarding typically in May through September. They have to have all the money allocated by September. So, the money in that grant would be allocated as long as they stay on schedule with their grants, and they typically try to, they have to have that money allocated before the federal budget, end of the federal budget cycle.
Okay.
So, normally, when the city applies for, just even applies for grants, those are sent up to council at the front end and not after the grant is awarded? Is, was there any reason why that wasn't done this time?
I'll take the hit on that. I had spoken to the business administrator at the time. I wasn't aware, because I don't remember the grants previously, SAFER grants or AFG grants or FPNS grants coming up to council beforehand, but the mayor has indicated that, you know, we will send that stuff up or at least notify council that, hey, we're, we're seeking to apply for a grant, similar to the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant where we were allocated $45,000 for smoke detectors and COs. We hadn't sent that up either, but we will, I will from my office, and they could put that squarely on me.
That was certainly one of the issues that I had when we were considering this over the fall time, because I felt like a lot of this could have been avoided had we done that and had these conversations early on during the grant application process. So, I think that would be important for the future.
Yep, I, I would agree completely, and that's squarely on me.
I would also like to, you know, at some point, see some input from the labor council, too, on, you know, what impact furloughs would have in terms of labor relations.
Okay.
Out of 10 fire, firefighters that go to the academy, how many, is there any dropout rate there?
There is, but it's relatively low. Just because of the change we made, I believe, in the 2012 contract, the testing that they need to go through prior to going down the hack, we have a pretty good pulse on what their success rate is going to be. But we always don't know, it's tough to tell. Sometimes you get somebody, we had one in the last academy, he got through EMT, he got through three weeks of the academy, started again into the fire portion and said, "This isn't for me." You know, we respect that. We'd rather have him make that decision at that point, but it's, it's a rarity. I'm not going to say it doesn't happen, but it can happen, yes.
Yeah, and if we had some dropout rate there, there would be that additional cost of that equipment and academy?
Well, the equipment we would get back. And typically, while they're in the academy, we don't give them, they're given rental equipment only because it's custom-sized and we can't have it for them in time by the time we hire them. So, they actually, it works out good for the city because they take rental gear that's down there, it's not getting tore up. Once they get back here, we get them their, their PPE set for here once they graduate.
Yeah, thank you for that. That was a clear answer for that question.
How long do they attend the academy?
The EMT portion is four weeks, and the fire portion is nine weeks. So, it's a 14-week academy.
I believe from our previous conversations, I know that it can be difficult to find hirees and, and new firefighters, especially compared to in, in previous years. I feel like that's going down, maybe not as much interest in the field as we would love to see. So, do you feel confident that you'd be able to find the, the trainees with the additional 10 positions?
Yeah, we have a current civil service certified list, and then we would probably be, we're ready to start moving towards developing another list. And with that other list, and I think I spoke to you about, we spoke pretty in-depth about this, our recruitment and retention in the city, we need to make some significant stride forward into who we're getting that message out to so that we can attract candidates. I don't want to speak for Chief Carroll, but I know the, the problems that he's dealing with, with being able to get a number of qualified applicants to fill vacancies, just to have enough. And we're seeing that trend in the fire service. I think he's at a, a worse level than we are right now. Our last test had 141, I believe, sign up, 129 showed up, 81 passed the test. We invited them to the, to the physical agility assessment. Only 66 showed up for the physical agility assessment, and only 32 were able to pass the physical agility assessment.
And then from that pool of 32, that's where you would select?
That's our active list at that point, correct.
All right, thank you.
So, do you have a certain amount of time to, to hire those new folks?
Once, if, if we move forward with accepting it, we would, once it's accepted, we would immediately hire them to start that period of performance. We've already spoken to Harrisburg Area Community College, and because of the sheer number of people that we are hiring, the 10, they would put on a special academy because they believe Harrisburg would have additional folks that are required. And we have done that before. The city of Scranton in 2003 had a special academy class done in the winter of 2003.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a quick one, since we're probably closing. So, I know this might be off-topic.
Sure.
But there's a question.
Mike. Sorry. We're posed the same question every week. I know this is a little off, off-topic. I know you can, you cannot speak to specifics, but it's about negotiations. Are they, are negotiations occurring, you know, on a regular basis?
They're, they're occurring, yeah, there's been dialogue between the attorneys.
I, I know, without specifics, are they getting closer, closer, or?
You never, you've been in negotiations, I'm sure, before, and I have as a union president. It, it depends on what the appetite of both sides are, but I think that just them having discussions is a positive thing.
Well, that's good, because we're hearing, you know, from administration, they're occurring. I, I just want to know if they're on a regular basis?
Yeah, I think they're happening more regularly now.
Good, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Chief, for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come here, and if there's anything else that you require, I'm sure that Mr. Bodenberg will send it down, and I'll send it right up to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a two-minute break, and then we'll come back for our regularly scheduled council meeting at 6:30.